All right. That's okay. Call the Order of Finance and Property. We'll also call the order Committee of the Whole. We'll have the other councilors join us. Right now, we are voting at our Finance and Property meeting for the budget and for 2022. Budget is kind of weird saying that number. I'm still back in 2001. But, and then we've already, so the public knows. We've already had a public hearing last night. We've had the department heads in for the last couple of weeks asking the questions and trying to get clarification on their particular budgets. Does anybody on Finance and Property have any questions before we proceed?
No, I don't think so.
Right, and so I was just talking to Vice President Rand. I'm just going to go tell them what we're voting on, like I'm going to go clerk of committees, clerk elections, and then do the total budget. I think it makes it easier. Makes sense to you?
That's fine.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Moving ahead, we'll start with transfers. Do I hear a motion for $2 million?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. The city clerks budget, which includes clerk of committees, the clerk budget, and the elections budget for a total of, looking for a motion for $648,856.16.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. The executive branch, which is the mayor's branch, which includes the executive and the licensing board, for a total executive branch of $837,696. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second for discussion. I just want to ask Mr., the mayor's not here, so I'll ask you, Brian, or Mr. Ailes, I'm sorry. Is all that payroll, the added positions, is that where they best fit in the mayor's budget? You have the, obviously, the chief of staff, the grant coordinator, the constituent services, the sustainability director, and the racial equity director. Is that a good place for all of them?
So, that's a really good question, right? And we talked about that internally when we were deciding that this, in fact, was, in our recommendation, the best place for these positions. The rationale behind it was that these positions, by their function, cross over many other departments and aren't responsible to any one particular other department, but more up to the executive branch and directed through the mayor's initiatives. So, for instance, the sustainability coordinator works very closely with Public Works. Maybe the schools works with me, works with the grant coordinator, works with all these other areas. And so they kind of act as a centralized point where we can coordinate the initiatives. And so, in my view, yes, I feel it's the appropriate place. And that goes for the grant coordinator as well. Obviously, the constituent service and the chief of staff work very closely with the mayor on a daily basis. And so that, in my view, also is an appropriate place to place these positions.
And you feel that they're all essential?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I get the benefit of working with them and seeing them day in and day out on numbers, meetings and initiatives, and I can honestly say that each one of them provide a level of coordination and project management that wouldn't exist without them in their own specific areas, so.
Just to add, the, I mean, we never, I know that Council Flaherty and I have been around a long time, and there was never that constituent services coordinator. And it's amazing what, how that position makes our job easier as city councilors. You have nine people doing it part-time, and it's easier to go through Jocelyn or whoever will be in that position, Stephanie, when she was there, as opposed to picking up the phone and randomly calling Mike Collins or, at the time, it was Chief Carter or Chief Lalaisher. It just, it centralizes everything.
That's great. I'm glad you see the value in it, because I do too.
Oh, yeah, of course. You can just pass something along, and you'll get the right answer quicker, as opposed to, you know, one of us chasing around different people. It helps a lot.
I think you bring a valid point. We had talked about this earlier, the idea, and maybe you can help explain a little bit. A lot of cities and towns have gotten money from the federal government, CARES, CARES money. Can you kind of go into that a little bit? Because it's, you know, throughout, indirectly throughout this whole budget of being able to sustain it. Because I guess my concern is not this year, and I'm going to use Hannah Bowen, who was on the call last night, that she used this phrase as transitional budget. And I think it's interesting, because we're very fortunate to be able to have the $12 million in federal money to help sustain us because of what we went through this past year. And it's also with the schools. The thing that concerns is making sure that we don't have staffing as part of that, because in a few years, this money is not going to be here. And we're not going, me and Paul aren't going to be here, but most of you are going to be up here making some tough decisions. I remember last year, we said, geez, when do we go through this budget? It's going to be a tough budget in a few years. We were, obviously, we never thought we'd get this kind of money. So the concern is, when this money goes away, where are we going to be as a city? Not Beverly, but the Commonwealth and throughout the country financially?
Well, that's a big question.
It is a big question.
So let me try to summarize some of the thinking that's gone into the CARES Act funding, which we've already received. We've, about a year into that funding, and that funding will expire in December. It's a little more than $3 million. And the discussions around that were, how do we take the infrastructure that supports city services and bring it to a higher level without increasing the recurring burden on the budget? And so, when I talk about recurring burden on the budget, you're talking about things like staff and recurring-type costs that you really want to avoid, to avoid, you know, that cliff you're talking about when the money goes away. Now, all of a sudden, you may have recurring costs that you've got to absorb in the budget. So we were very mindful of the types of investments we were making and the fact that they were targeted to address the pandemic. And so there are a lot of costs in there that had to do with our ability to continue to operate as a government remotely. So whether that's, you know, enhanced security functions, remote computing enhancements throughout, you know, our staff, those are the types of things that, when the money goes away, the need for that will not be there either. So we can pull back from those, and you're back to your budget where it was pre-CARES funding. The ARPA money, which is the American, you know, Support Plan that the Biden administration put in, that's significantly more money. It's $12 million. And the potential uses of that are much broader than just supporting city government. And so, you know, we're still in the process of digesting the scope of what that funding can be used for. I'm sure we're all going to have conversations over the next week, few weeks, maybe even months, to determine the best use of that money. My recommendation on the use of that money, without getting into specific areas, is that the money is designed to support the community as a whole through the pandemic and a broad range of impacts that individuals, businesses, certain groups of individuals have felt as a result of the pandemic. And so if we can be thoughtful about what we purchase and how we spend that money, so that at the end, when the money's gone, you've created a better foundation for which to build the community on after the fact, the community's in a better place. And now, through the typical resources, we can take the next step and continue to build on that foundation. I know that's very broad, it's not specific, but I would be concerned if we were to look at that resource as a way to either shift recurring costs off of the city budget or enhance the city's budget through staffing increases or things that are going to continue to cost and take away from the flexibility we have in our budget as it exists now to address various concerns throughout the year. Is that helpful?
I think it's, yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's complicated, so I appreciate it.
You know, it is, and it's going to be long conversations that we all need to have collectively. And I honestly, I don't think we could cover it tonight if we talked only about that, because there's a lot to it.
All right, I have a second on the motion, so I'm looking for all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Reserve for appropriation, $1,295,000. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Finance, which includes accountant, informational systems, assessors, treasurer, collector, and procurement, for a total municipal financed budget of $3,244,221.86.
66.
66.
68 cents?
66.
66?
Glad you need your glasses.
All right, don't tell Annie, because she's going to tell me I need glasses. Keep us between us.
And the thousands of people.
Exactly. I don't think she's watching, though, hopefully. All right, do I hear?
So moved.
Her second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
There's already a post on the Beverly, Mass Facebook page, Flaherty needs glasses.
I thought it was doing good, because we rehearsed this a little bit.
They're small numbers, they are.
All right, city solicitors budget, a total of $602,468.79.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Human resources, which is $224,816.18.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. On to planning, which includes the Conservation Commission and planning, for a $695,529.20. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Onto municipal inspections, which includes the building commissioner, sailor, city electrician, for a total of $628,341.19.
So moved.
Second for discussion. I don't think I was here when Steve Frederickson was in, so I would like to ask Mr. Housman a question. Rumor on the street for the past four years is that Mr. Frederickson is retiring soon.
Yes.
May we see a new appointment in the fall for that position?
Yeah, I don't know the timing on it. Fortunately, the pandemic legislation allowed for extension. Technically, he's already retired, but is able to stay on and help transition. I do know he's anxious to get on with, you know, the rest of his, you know, retirement.
Life.
Yeah, right? So I'm sure you'll see it fairly soon. I don't know the exact timing on it, though.
Yeah, it would be nice to have him in before he leaves, that's all. Thank you.
That's a good question, because I've heard the same thing. You're all set?
All set.
Council Housman?
Yeah, if I may. In my 16 years on the zoning board of appeals, I worked with four different building inspectors. Mr. Frederickson was the only one who came from outside, hired from outside the city. He brought a level of professionalism to that office in the funk, at least from the vantage point I sat at, that we had not seen before. And really, I thought, just raised the caliber of that office tremendously and has really brought that office forward as a, you know, as a functioning body. So for what it's worth, I hope that the experience that the Scanlon administration had in bringing him in will be sort of weighed and considered when looking for a replacement for Mr. Frederickson, because it really made a tremendous difference, you know, from the vantage point that I sat at and at least from my observation since then.
Yeah, well said.
Thank you for, thank you, Council.
All in favor? You want a question?
So, Council Housman, 16 years on the zoning board of appeals, and now 12 on the council? Or 10?
Finishing my 10th.
10th, wow. Good for you.
Or crazy.
I'm good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Public safety, which includes animal control, police, fire, emergency management, and the habber master, for a total of $16,848,568.1.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Engineering, which includes engineering and sanitation, for a total of $2,963,557. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Public services, which includes highway, snow and ice, the garage, cemetery, the electrical division, parks and forestry, and public property, for a total of $6236,148.20. Sorry, I didn't say that correctly, but got the rights.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Community services, health, council on aging, the veteran services, library, and the recreation department, for a total of $432,763.68.
So moved.
Second for discussion.
Go ahead.
I just want, you know, I've talked to a few other people also, some on the city council and some in the city of Beverly. My opinion, I'm not the mayor, so I don't dole out the salaries. I think the council on aging director's salary is a little low compared to some others in the city. Obviously, I'm going to approve the budget, but I think that for all the work she's done, especially during the pandemic, is, compared to some other people that might be in a different age bracket than her, I think that she's underpaid.
And just to follow up on that, before I go to the rest of the council, I think it was Scanlon budget that we did this, but I followed with the Cahill administration. We used to have, the increases were in the individual budget, and we made the call as a council to say, we worked with the mayor at the time, to say, you're their supervisor, you decide whether you want to give, we'll give you a bucket of money based on percentages, and if you want to give a department head 3% and one 1%, that's our prerogative. Because a lot of times, what we saw is, when it was in the budget, we'd go in there and say, okay, we don't think that person deserves 3%, we're going to give them 2%. Even though we weren't with them on a daily basis, we let the chief, you know, the mayor make that call, but we, as a council, gave them a bucket of money. And that's kind of how that history came about. And it seems to have worked, it seemed to be a little bit more productive. It doesn't necessarily mean we need to give the mayor the total bucket as much as we want, we can always lower that down if we want to, but he can, could do that if he wanted to.
I'm not the mayor, no.
No, but maybe, it might be someday, you never know. Council Flowers?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with President Quansey's statement. I think, I think particularly, anytime people are working in helping professions, which the council on aging director certainly is, working with people, that can be the kind of work that's hard to quantify, it can be different from other kinds of work, but also is incredibly important to our community. And I know we've heard several times, the council on aging director has talked about our rising senior population, which means that they're going to continue servicing more Beverly seniors. And so, and then with the pandemic. So I would just add my agreement with President Quansey on that.
Council Housman?
Ditto.
Ditto, love that. That's a s-
What time was it?
I'm standing.
7:21. 7:21, June 15.
I didn't even have time to put my timer on.
I have to agree as well, and I have, I will say that I think that over the course of the pandemic and, which happened to coincide with my first year in office, she was the most accessible and kept us the most up to date, yet I think she still had the lion, like she, their, the position at the council on aging was so heavily impacted by the work of the pandemic. And she was, even prior to that, I think that her salary was a little low, so I would wholeheartedly agree.
Okay. All in favor? Yes, sir.
Did anybody else get to do the morning stretch recording?
Oh, yeah.
Wasn't that the best?
And I did one of the walks with them, too.
Yeah, I did my walks in the woods, that was good, too.
Yeah, it was cool, I mean, you had to.
But I was worried about the breathing, because it was like you're supposed to, it would time out. And I was like, this is a really lot, like if you, you had to like inhale and exhale, I was worried I was going too fast.
Oh, right.
And people were going to hyperventilate.
I got a couple of phone calls that said, hey, thank you, you were great this morning. Good stuff. I mean, and she had to get creative throughout the years to keep all those seniors, that many of them live by themselves in the mix, so. And Mr. Ailes will probably pass our concerns along.
Absolutely will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
I like not being in charge.
What's that? Wait six months.
No, I'm still in charge at the other place.
I was talking home. Schools, which also includes the North Shore Regional Vocational, and I know we, I talked about that as well, of the waiting list and all that, some of the concerns, but the total Is that 20, there's a 6, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And I do have a quick comment question. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that this is probably one of the main places that we actually do see CARES Act funding incorporated into the budget. For example, for the kind of temporary positions of the additional counselors at, I think, one and a half, maybe, in the high school and the middle school. Is that accurate?
So there, none of the CARES money or any other funding sources related to the coronavirus relief are in this budget? So it's not in this number? But this is one of the budgets that has the alternative source of those funds to push potential costs related to the pandemic over to. And yeah, I believe you're correct in saying, you know, there are, there were numerous positions that they're looking to the ESER funds, which is different than the CARES fund.
Okay, got it.
To fund for a period of, I believe it's two years, to aid in some of the transition of back-to-school. And so they're very intentional about the use of those funds, alluding to, you know, what Council Flaherty talked about earlier, is that those are the types of costs that are related directly to the transition. And so theoretically, in two years, when the money goes away, so too, hopefully, does the need for some of those costs, or the majority of those costs.
Okay, that's really helpful. So actually, we don't see any of those funds in this budget. This is really just bare bones. There's no, this is the typical funding sources all represented here and nothing more.
Correct. I'd label it as maybe a level service budget, and then everything else related to the pandemic is coming from a separate source.
Okay, thank you.
So do they have any staffing costs within that grant money?
Yes.
So that is somewhat of a concern.
Absolutely, and that's a great point. So back when they were building the budget, early on, the mayor, myself, Dr. Chirochik, Gene Sherburne, sat down and went through exactly what they were intending to push over to that funding source. And I had comfort in the fact that the positions that were labeled to be coming from this finite funding source were the types that they could pull back from in two years if the resources couldn't continue to support, or if the need goes away for those types of positions. So I'm fairly comfortable with the strategy that they're employing in that it's not going to overly burden the budget in two years.
And this is kind of something related, a lot of businesses have closed, and it might even close in a couple of more years, and it's kind of hard to look into a crystal ball. But even with excise tax and people buying cars, do you see, you know, I mean, my concern is the tax revenue is not going to be there. I know we had talked the other night about, you know, it's not always the revenue, it's the, we are the expenses, and I don't know, the 75% of our budget is staffing cost. And how do we, you know, you talk about other cities and towns, you know, DPW, police, you know, they have a lot more people in their payroll, and we're, we're a pretty lean, like, city. And the concern is going forward, whether we could, on the revenue side, from the taxes, whether we can support that long-term.
Yeah, so that plays into our overall budget strategy, that we've been, you know, it's actually been written up as somewhat of a best practice from the rating agencies and stuff. We talked about this the other night. The benefit to our strategies around the revenues, excess revenues going into free cash at the end of the year, is that we've built in a buffer zone, a buffer period to react when the economy begins to sour, because we're not relying on every last nickel that we expect to bring in in the current year. The excess revenue, if there is any at the end of the year, goes into the free cash, and then we decide collectively which, which things we're going to spend it on. And it does get spent, and it does go back to the taxpayer. So it's not lost revenue by pushing it to the free cash certification, but it builds in a buffer period, because if, in the middle of the year, we're not hitting our targets for certain revenues, we know when we go to build next year's budget that we can make adjustments and react and still be solvent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Council Flowers?
Not a question, I just wanted to just continue that conversation. It looks like they gave us this little chart of the positions that are for ESER 2, so it, it looks like five elementary, seven elementary para, yeah, one middle school instructional coach, two middle school reading, one middle school outreach counselor, one and a half adjustment counselors. But if I'm correct, Mr. Ailes, Dr. Chirochik alluded to that this, this ESER 2 goes through 2023, but she said ESER 3 will be coming as well, so that will be something that they'll be looking to as well? Is that correct?
I believe that is what she said, and she also said about those particular positions that they're two-year contracts. So there's the ability to pull back if needed at that point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council Housman?
Yes, Council.
Are you all set?
I am. Did you want to ditto me again?
I'm sorry. I'm not going to get two in one night, I'm a champ. Yeah, no, because we're on the school budget, and there was discussion last night about sort of communication and some opinions about, you know, communicating better, and maybe the city side does a better job of presenting budget material. I wonder if, I'm going to ask if you would take this opportunity to perhaps, in a sort of bigger picture way, address the question of how we might, or what you think, whether we need to, as both a council and an administration, whether it's in the website or documents or whatever, convey budgetary information to those who are not immersed in this every day, basically to laymen, laypeople, the budget process. One of the things I've tried to do in the financial forecast, as you well know, is really try to navigate those discussions about what people want to hear and what belongs there, what doesn't. I have some thoughts on that, but I'm interested in your thoughts sort of more globally about communicating, but communicating budgetary information, using sort of the school as an example of a different way to do it, or an additional way to do it.
Yeah, so I really appreciate the feedback that we got last night. You know, it's helpful for me to hear that. I've had a day now to think about it. I don't disagree that we can do a better job communicating the budget to, to our residents. You know, we, we were, me, I say we, my staff, myself, you know, we're, by training, finance professionals and IT professionals. That's what we went to school for, that's what we've done our professional careers as. And we are extremely effective at our job, I feel, and very hyper-focused on a lot of the nuts and bolts that keep an organization running. Continuity of business, security of, you know, IT, the accounting regulations and rules and how we operate, that sometimes we forget about saying, hey, here's what we're doing and why we're doing it. And so, yes, I think there's an opportunity for us to work over the next few months to try to get something that is more. to try to get something that is more digestible out there, in terms of process, in terms of products that people can review. It's my hope that if this council approves the budget as presented, it does include an additional staff member in the IT department, that will help me. We currently have an individual that does all of the help desk work, and the website, and dozens of other things, but if I'm able to position this new position as the primary help desk point of contact, it can help alleviate some of the restraints that are on some of the IT staff that can help me get, get us there. So that's the kind of pathway I see to get there. That's part of it. The other, the other part, and I've had discussions with some of, some of you all about this as well, is, you know, potentially some additional resources on a temporary basis or contractual basis to just get us over the initial hump, so that it gets to a point where it's more manageable and can be rolled into the daily operations of the finance department as a whole.
Was the website done in-house, or was there an outside?
So there was an outside consultant, and if you've ever done website design and redesign, even though they have these canned, you know, structures, you still need to build the hangers for them. And you still need to coordinate and put the, put the information on there. So a lot of that was done internally by the Chief of Staff, Ms. Bellotti, as well as Garrett Whitney, who works in our IT department. And they did great, great work during a pandemic, juggling all this other stuff that was, that was going on. And they still got that done, and it's impressive that they were able to manage through that.
Thank you.
On a side note, talking about IT and adding one, is everybody, I know, I think the mayor was having everybody back full-time, not working remotely, is everybody, is that the plan, having, having everybody back here at City Hall?
Yes.
Not to City Hall, but in, in general?
Yes.
Any other questions regarding the school budget? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Onto debt service, which mostly includes, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ailes, but the police station and the middle school.
That's the biggest reason for the increase? Those are the two pieces that came on, but in terms of a debt schedule, there's dozens of projects, yes.
But the biggest ones are, the new ones are those two.
Correct.
So I hear a motion for ten, ten, ten million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Annuities and pensions for twelve million, four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and zero cents.
Ninety-four.
What's that? Did I say ninety-four? Ninety-four, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Workman's, let's see here. We'll do these individually. I'm sorry, what?
Other.
Other. Right, we could, we just do other, like we'd be consistent, just do other total? So what other includes, I was going to do individually, because if other doesn't, with finance, you can give a good idea. What other includes?
Right.
Is workman's compensation, unemployment, health insurance, life insurance, and payroll tax, for a total of eleven million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Assessments at one million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, and sixty-two dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. For a total general fund of one hundred and forty-four million, one hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Total general fund revenues, which we still have to do to match that, is, is one, one hundred, same number, one hundred and forty-four million, one hundred and eighty thousand, and three and ninety-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. The water fund, we'll have to do these individually. There's about four, or six of them, the enterprise accounts, so expenditures for, under the water fund, and we'll also do the rate as well, so remind me if I forget the rate. Five million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Transfer of retained earnings, nine hundred thousand.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of five million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? And on the rate of three point one seven?
So moved.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Now onto the sewer fund, for eight million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-four, forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Transfer of retained earnings from, of eight hundred and five thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of eight million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, and one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Of a rate per one hundred cubic feet of six dollars and twenty-four cents?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Did you want to mention anything about that? I know we talked about it, or was it change? That's one of the, quickly go on there.
Sure, I, no, I don't want to beat a dead horse. It's a very small increase, again, because of the, you just transferred retained earnings, which I support in general. You just need to be prepared, there may not be as much retained earnings next year, so you may have to see a larger rate increase, and we've talked about this ad nauseam. So other than that, I have really nothing to add to my previous commentary.
That's okay, okay.
Onto sanitation and recycling, of expenditures of three million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, and five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of the same number, of three million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, and five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Does that include the increase, just to clarify, of the, of the new contract?
It, the contract hasn't been completely settled, but we have a, an idea of what the costs are going to be in there. Yes, they are included in this.
And RFPs, that's how you do it, so people know at home?
It was, it, we're in negotiations right now with our current hall or JRM.
Recreation and Enterprise of four hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Transfer of retained earnings of eighty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of the same number, of expenditures of four hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Golf and tennis enterprise, expenditures of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of the same number, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Senior Citizen Enterprise account of expenditures of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So moved.
And a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Transfer of retained earnings of twelve thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Total revenues of the total, of the same as expenditures, of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Airport Enterprise account, expenditures of five hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Total revenues of five hundred and fifteen dollars, five hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents.
So moved.
And a second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three to zero. Oh, my goodness. That's it? Did I miss anything? Does any council, is there anybody else have anything to add? What is, our, our next meeting is next Tuesday?
Tuesday, the twenty-second, regular city council meeting, and then on Wednesday, the twenty-third, we vote on the budget.
Total budget, right.
Yes, and if everybody can hang around for a group photo at the end of the next meeting, just to get to the last budget, that'd be good. We haven't done one for a couple of terms, and it would be nice.
Anything to add, Mr. Ailes?
No, thank you all.
No, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. All right, hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Council Flaherty.
Motion to adjourn, committee of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, kid.